Good evening, welcome to the Selectman's Meeting for the Town of Acton, Maine for January 22nd, 2020. First item is salute the flag.
To the flag, United States of America, and to the republic which sustains one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, Town Administrator Weekly Upgrade. Phil, it was yours, Jim?
Thank you. All right. The first item I have is a transfer station attendant reached out to me and asked me to put an ad together for an employee that he needs for the summer months. He's replacing Harry Left, right? So I'm just gonna read it to you real quickly. Town of Acton is currently accepting applications for a part-time transfer station attendant. This position is from April 1st to October 1st, and is approximately 21 to 24 hours a week. The ideal candidate will have a strong work ethic and work well with the public. Interested candidates should stop by the Acton Town Hall during regular business hours to request an application. Deadline to apply is Friday, February 14th, 2020. Town of Acton is an equal opportunity employer. So Bob has okayed it. We're going to advertise tomorrow unless you have any concerns.
Sounds good.
I received a call today from the Attorney General's Office. That email that I sent out a week or so ago didn't go unnoticed. They did get back to me today. They appreciated us reaching out to them, but they are unable to get involved in any individual or municipal issues, including Article 43. They were very clear that they, you know, work for the state of Maine, and they just don't get involved. She gave me a couple of individuals in regards to land use that we might be able to reach out to, but basically it was just a courtesy call to say that they were not going to get involved.
Thank you, but no, thank you.
I did get an email from the REC Director looking for us to order some metals. She is waiting, just waiting for the debit card form to be filled out, and then we'll get those ordered for them. All of the electrical work down there, all the electrical items were ordered, and we went back and forth with Home Depot, had some issues at one location that we were able to find at the other, so that eventually got purchased. And I think that Mr. Langley can give you an update tonight in regards to the well and the digging. He and I had a conversation about it earlier today. Cameras were installed on Tuesday, so there are cameras now in the building. They are in three locations, going to be four locations. There are screens in the Clerk's Office and the Treasurer's Office to be able to monitor. So right before we started the meeting, David made mention of he was watching some videos, and it looked like some of the individuals in it were kind of still or repetitive motion. I actually got a call from a resident, two residents this week indicating that they were watching one of the Selectman's Meetings, and it looked like we were basically just still or stuck, right?
Repeating, yeah.
So I reached out to the APAT Department Head, and he did acknowledge that there are some items that need to be replaced. Ideally, you know, he's looking at about $20,000 to replace everything he needs to. A minimum of $10,000 to replace the switch to fix one of the problems. He is very, you know, conscientious of his budget and taxpayer money, and generally doesn't ask for things because, you know, he doesn't, he knows, he can't buy them within his budget based on the revenue that's coming. I'm bringing it to you on, not from him, but from me, because if the residents, if we're going to have the cable channel and we're going to utilize it, we have to keep the equipment up. You know, he started, I think he said in 2011, I don't know, I can't remember what year the original contract was, but some of this equipment is getting old, older.
Right.
And we have to replace it.
Well, I mean, I watched it the other night, and, you know, you're better off closing your eyes and listening to it, because someone watching TV doing all those...
And that's exactly what the residents said.
We might as well have it working right.
Right. And it was, and it's only certain, and he, and Mr. Corey did explain it to me in much more detail, I'm just giving you the short version, and, you know, he's been working hard. It's only happening certain times and certain videos, and he thinks he's kind of figured it out, but we talked about when, you know, when we go before Warren Finance this year, and even before the Selectman, you know, starting to think about a capital improvement or a capital reserve, something for that department, if it's something you guys and the voters want to keep doing. But don't be surprised this year if we see a Warren article with some equipment, because we either fix it, or we turn it off.
Yep.
Because you can't, and we can't have it both ways, so. A little heads up on that. I had mentioned the Democratic Caucus to you a few weeks back, so keep my oral level here, here. I'll mention the Republican Caucus. There has not been a date set yet, but it does look like it'll be the 1st of February. Mr. Nass is trying to put it together. It looks like, for the first time in many years, we will not be doing it as a joint effort in York County. It will be done here at the Town Hall. As soon as we have information, I will let you know, and assuming we can, I can create a slide that's half Republican, half Democrat, at least advertising the dates for the use of our voters, we'll advertise that for them, because it'll be just the dates and locations, nothing more. And as registrar, I'm required to be there to open it up and get everybody registered. So that's coming up, hopefully soon you'll get a date. Jim, I've been working closely with Peter Baxter and Gail Bovier, who has been working very hard behind the scenes. She, they have, a majority of the questions answered. She is posting up the last of the signs that the insurance company has required. The orientation package is going to be the last piece that we're going to have to kind of tackle together, but when I last spoke to her this week, we were going to give her until Friday, Monday, I'll go in, take pictures, walk through it again with the insurance company, and kind of reevaluate where they are, but they've met most of the requirements as far as the things that they want.
And I spoke with her the other, when she came up the other day and asked her how they were working out on the financial aspect of it, and I guess they're going to be working on that afterwards, so.
Yeah, and that's, I'm glad you brought that up. That was one of the other things that, that kind of came up, that the Selectman, you don't need to decide tonight, but something you need to start, they would like you to start thinking about, and they are asking for you to handle it the way that you handled it last year, and give them a chance to come to town meeting and support it. They would like to see it go back to being funded in your budget. Let the Warren Finance make a recommendation, and then go from there.
Well, she was, when I talked to Gail the other day, I think pretty much what she was looking for was how to town, pretty much heat it, pay, you know, pay the upkeep of the building, and hoping that the rest of the, you know, the funds that come in from the signups would pay for the equipment and part of it, you know? I think that's, when I talked to her, that's kind of where we were rolling with that, but obviously until, but we need them to come in with their plan, or what they think they're, you know, they're going to be able to come up with funds and all that, because we obviously have to make sure that they upgrade some of their, the equipment in there and all that, so.
Right.
They have to have some sort of fund.
Right.
And if you own the building, so whether, you know, we take care of it or not.
Yeah, regardless of what it's used for, we gotta, we gotta heat it and take care of it, so, or flatten it, one or the other.
Yeah.
So that, that's one of the first things they're going to be looking for from you guys, is whether or not you're willing to put that Warren article back on there, so.
I'd be, I'll be up for putting that on, on the article, as long as they have some sort of plan of how they're going to fund the rest of the program, so we're not heating it, maintaining it, and nobody's using it. We just got to make sure there's another part of that plan before we, I think we can do that.
So after, if it's okay with you guys, after Monday comes and goes, and we send everything to the insurance company, we make sure they're satisfied with that side of it. Maybe we'll call them back in, or at least the one or two leaders, and we can have a workshop or talk about where we go financially with it.
Sure. Sounds good.
The new copiers are in, one downstairs is in, the new MVR 3-1 is upstairs, so they've been in for almost a week now.
All of them.
Seems to be going well, I haven't heard any differently.
Good.
I'm ready to go to print for the town report. I'm missing two reports, so I'm looking for instruction from the board.
I know one of them, you missing, what's the other?
Do you want me to say that?
Why not? One of them is one of the, one of the Road Commissioners.
Correct.
District 2.
Correct. The other one is one of the Southern Maine, SMPC, yeah.
Oh, so, okay, one in-house and one county, so to speak?
Yeah, right.
Okay.
He, I did, you know, in all fairness, I did speak to him, I'm gonna say, today's Wednesday, or last week, and he was going to try to get something over.
Yep, and I spoke to him too, and he assured me, I spoke to him on a Friday, and he assured me be in your office by Monday.
What would the board like me to do?
I think we give him till Friday, and after that, go to print.
Okay.
Yep.
Just more of an FYI, the last planning board meeting was not filmed, there were some technical difficulties with the camera, so if you're looking for it, it's not going to be there.
Okay.
Budgets are due on January 31st, that's next Friday. We have very few in. Michelle and I will do, have our meeting next week to do the basic municipal management, and then we'll create a workshop for the five of us to sit down and go through all of your lines, but we need the, we need the budgets in from the departments. So we have, I look at my calendar.
We see in the budgets, a due on the 31st.
So they're due into the Treasurer's Office by the 31st, so what happens from there, once we get them all in, we'll sit down, five of us, and start going through and looking at them and everything, and then, we've got a timeline right through town meeting.
Yeah, and we haven't, I mean, in the past, like when I was Road Commissioner, the Selectmen would send us things saying you're going to flatline your budget, or have we told them anything?
The board hasn't given us any such direction. They saw the memo that went out with the timeline, so I assumed, I mean, department heads have put, I say have, I mean, the couple that have submitted already, putting a 3% increase in, you can certainly change that if you so choose. What has happened in the past, I mean, they'll either, you know, you either tell them to flatline it right across, or the board will look at it and just start making cuts, depending on what you want the tax rate to do, what you want the undesignated fund balance to do.
Well, my, I mean, my, my opinion, and this is just my opinion, but I like to see the departments put in what they absolutely need.
Yep.
Okay? Obviously, within some sort of reason, so we don't have to do that, so.
It's, you know, the, the budget's never an easy time, and it's never, you know, and when the board does have to make cuts, they try to make them across the board, but, you know, the tax rate is at 1205. It was, it's been at 1205 for a couple of years now, it was at 1195 prior to that. You know, we have to still, within reason, try to keep it somewhat.
Right.
We do have a, you know, a healthy undesignated fund balance, we're going to be able to increase our excise and some of our revenue accounts based on the Tax括号's Office, so we're going to see what comes in, and, you know, Michelle's very good at giving you numbers and saying, look at, you know, if you want it to stay within five or 10 cents, you're going to cut this much out, and kind of go from there, but.
What was COLA this year, about two and a half?
Yes. Through social security?
We typically, hmm?
Through, through social security, or?
Yeah, whoever we get COLA, yeah.
Yeah, it's, I'll have to double check.
Yeah, what was it?
For social security?
1.7.
Yeah, I don't think it's social security we generally, but I'll ask Michelle, you know? And you can make any adjustments. Some department heads don't put in for increases at all, so.
No, I expect some increases from certain departments.
Well, that's, you guys.
I just want to make sure they're there, you know, within reason.
Yep.
Okay. The foreclosure date on the 2017 taxes is coming up, this Friday, the 24th, is the last day that the town will accept personal checks, so after that, it'll be cash and money orders. We unfortunately still have 11 properties on that list. You guys scheduled to meet with legal next week, on the 29th, at 4:45. This was all regarding personnel, and I'm sorry, drug testing.
Yep.
Something, well, drug testing, and you can, under executive session, you can meet with your legal counsel, or we can schedule us a workshop, it's your choice. Somebody else has come up, though, and I'm wondering if, with the earliest I can get him in here, that you could possibly be here to, so I can...
I can be here by 4:30.
4:30, okay. All right, I'll just see if I can get him in for 4:30, just so we can...
What day is that again, Jim?
All right, two things at one, do two things at once, next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday, okay, yeah.
And I'll remind you as we get closer.
Yeah.
All right, I think that's all I have for my updates.
Very good. Warrants and bills, I've already signed. Yep, you already signed, okay, so that's all set. But approval of the agenda.
Make a motion, approve the agenda for January 22nd.
Okay, I'll second it. All in favor? Opposed? Which, Jen comes back, and we can... Any minutes of the last meeting?
So we've got two, and we need to table, one because one of you were absent, and last week's, we do have a little bit of a delay in, in that. Actually, I wanted to mention that, I forgot to. There was, for, for personnel and medical reasons, the video was a little late getting up, outside of the two or three days, it was all, so I did get an email about it, wondering why it took a week to get up, so we were aware in advance, but for that same reason, the minutes aren't quite ready.
Okay, okay.
We'll table one.
Yeah, so we just table all that until next week?
Yes, please, yeah.
Yeah, so we'll just table all the minutes until next week? Okay. Now, were we going to do the appointment first?
Do you want to do the department heads?
Do it all at once, maybe however you want to do it.
Probably just do the department heads first, and then have that one come up, or you want to fire chief first?
Well, we got to do the appointment in conjunction with the fire chief presentation.
I figured you could do it at the same time.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so the first thing we got to do, we have an, we're going to have the fire chief come up, he has a brief presentation, and we also have an appointment that we have to sign.
Hi, Rick Smith, Fire Chief, Acton Fire Rescue. So as part of promoting me from Deputy Chief to Fire Chief, that left a vacancy, what I was formerly doing, mostly EMS work, making sure our ambulance billing, supply ordering, CQI, which is our quality improvement, because we make sure that all our runs, our, our providers are doing the best job they can, all the EMS stuff, that was a job that I was doing as Deputy Chief, and then now we need somebody to replace that. So what we did was we put the job out, or the position out in-house for our members to apply for. We tested three candidates who had to go through an extensive interview process with a board of our own members, and then a separate interview with me as the Fire Chief, and what we selected, based on the highest score, is our in-house firefighter paramedic, Dave Emmons. So, Dave, you want to come up? Do you guys want to vote first, or?
Sure. Okay, what I have here is a certificate of appointment, Title 30A, MRSA 2602, Selectman's Office, Municipality of Acton, Maine. Two, David Emmons, the Selectman of the Municipality of Acton, due in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the state of Maine, hereby appoint you as Deputy Fire Chief within and for the municipality of Acton until November 1st, 2022, given under our hand this 22nd day of January 2020.
Make a motion, we appoint David Emmons as Deputy Fire Chief.
I'll second that. All in favor? All opposed?
Thank you for accepting my suggestion. Our candidate is definitely well-versed for the job. Thank you, Dave. With that, I'll be pinning him with a Deputy Chief's badge.
Need a Band-Aid, or you're also up there?
Thank you.
So just a reminder, Mr. Selectman, that you need to take an oath, so we can, if you want to hang around, we can do it after the meeting, or you can do it now, whatever you'd like to do.
Up to you.
I've got to memorize, so it's your choice.
All right, let me do it now, then.
Come on up.
All right.
Can I have the, oh, got it. Is right here, right after me? I, David Emmons.
I, David Emmons.
Do swear.
Do swear.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
And the laws of the state.
And the laws of the state.
As the Town of Acton Deputy Fire Chief.
As the Town of Acton Deputy Fire Chief.
The best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Very good.
Great.
Sign here. And I'll get your copy first thing tomorrow.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other department heads? Or committee chairs?
Dennis Long, Chairman of the Warren Finance Committee. We had our meeting last night, it was a good turnout. I brought the question to the committee about the capital improvement, taking over the capital improvement and developing a plan, and we took a vote, and it was six to zero, no. So, thank you.
Six to zero, no?
Right, they don't want to take it over.
They don't, okay.
Right, no, they felt it was a responsibility of the Selectmen, so.
So what does that mean with the upcoming meetings? Are you guys still going to do your capital improvement meeting?
Monday, yes, 6 o'clock. All the departments have been notified.
I'm confused now.
I'm confused.
Warren Finance voted not to do it?
Not to come up with a capital improvement plan.
Okay.
It is, was their understanding of what the job of a capital improvement committee was.
So I think they want to hear the department's capital improvement, capital improvement needs from a budget purpose, but they're not intending, not planning on taking it over.
Exactly.
Is that the purpose of the meeting?
Yeah, not to develop a plan.
So they still want to hear from each department?
Okay.
As to what they have for needs long-term, but they're not...
Not, they aren't interested, and they don't believe, some of them spoke, they don't believe it's under the, under the orders that we should be doing that.
The board is just kind of wondering, then what's the purpose of the meeting? But it's, so you can hear number wise?
Exactly, like you said, it's for, it's to hear from the departments what their intentions are, or what they'd like to see, and it, it's more or less their meeting, I mean, it's not going to be debated with anybody, it's just...
More of an informational meeting.
Informational, exactly.
You're going to have everybody at that meeting, all the departments at once, or is it going to be separated?
Hopefully they're all there at the same time.
Okay.
I, I've talked to everybody, and everybody seemed, said it was, they thought it was a real good idea.
The departments that come in?
The Road Department, the REC Department, the Fire Department, the Transfer Station, School Board, did I say the Roads?
Yep.
The Roads, I don't know if I've got anybody or not.
So the, prior to the last possible meeting with the Warren Finance, I told you that the Treasurer and Code Enforcement Officer and myself sat together and made a list of what we thought building-wise here. We haven't, we were hoping to review that with the board, if you're going on, you know, on their behalf, because you haven't seen the list yet, that we have as, just as employees, but, you know, we're looking for direction from you, because it's really your building.
I apologize, Jen, I forgot you guys.
You always leave us out.
I think when we, when we start budget season, we start meeting with all, you know, all the committees, start meeting with the Finance Committee, we can announce at that point, Tom, wouldn't you, wouldn't you think that'd be a good idea? I mean...
Yeah, I mean, if he's getting, if the board, if the Warren Finance is getting information from everybody...
I mean, do we, do we know that these items that they're going to put forward are all going to be on this year, is that they're included in their budget?
Absolutely not.
Okay, so I, see, and I don't know, I don't know what's on anybody's list.
It's just, it's just an informational thing, and...
They actually are coming with some sort of proposal to you guys, or this just going to be a talkover?
It's just going to be a talk.
Okay, yeah.
It's just, like I said, it's just informational, and talking to the Fire Chief and, and the Road Commission and stuff, the school, they, they thought it was, be a good idea to have everybody sit down in a room and have a conversation, and have an understanding where everybody's coming from, for what they think they need for the future. Okay?
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other department heads, committee chairs? Seeing none? All business, goat hill.
I'm still processing in my mind, as town employees, where our, what our role is next week, and what you want us to do, so I guess we need to talk about that.
For what?
Well, so, I was, so, sort of saying, so Michelle and Ken and I got together.
Right.
We made a list, I mean, some of the things on there was like the siding of the, the backside of the siding, that's never been done, but...
It all needs to be part of the same process.
You guys need to see that list.
Yeah.
So you want us to go and present this list?
I, I don't think so. I think that we have, we get our list together, just like when everybody else passes in their stuff, if we're going to be doing, what are we looking, doing a five-year plan, we have to do capital improvements, you know, for the future.
If we do, yeah, five years.
So, I mean, it's going to be more thought put into it than to next week.
Yeah.
We really haven't done that.
Right.
So...
I'd say you three can work with us on it, and...
Okay.
Yeah.
We just don't, we, I mean, as employees, we don't want to trump with the board, you know what I mean, because these ideas are not, I mean, my, our offices don't need anything specific, and I think that's why it's easily forgotten, because we don't have road projects or bridges, but there are issues, you know what I mean, that we want to go over with it, we just don't know where, you know?
Yeah.
Where, what you want.
Yeah, I'd say plug them in, you know, that's going to be part of our conversation when we sit down, we discuss the building, and, yeah. Yep. Okay? Goat hill.
Goat hill. So we had a conversation with Mr. Davis shortly behind, before the meeting, he's still working out the logistics of the low bidder, and I expect that he'll have some information for us in the next week or so.
Okay. Sounds good. New business, open thermal camera bids.
So we've been advertising that the town was accepting quotes for an FLIRK-55 thermal imaging camera. Supposed to meet me halfway.
It did.
With a vehicle charger, specs and everything could be reached through the Fire Chief, it's advertised, we put it in several places, so, got one bid today, or one bid yesterday.
This is the only bid?
That's it.
So through the process, some time ago, we received an anonymous donation from a person in town of a sizable sum, and they specifically requested that go to a new thermal imaging camera. So over the last however many months in-house, we've been demoing different cameras, doing our due diligence to do research, and came up with a camera that's going to work best for us, is when we put out for the bids, so we could use that donation to put it towards a piece of life-saving equipment that makes a rapid difference in our response to fires, so.
Okay, this is from HSE, Fire and Safety Equipment, Harrison Trader Enterprises, and we have, I believe this is the right spec from what you wanted, you wanted a FLIR, so is it?
FLIR.
FLIR, okay. 55, 320 by 240 thermal camera kit, there was a patent number on here, includes hard case, ionized batteries, retractable lanyards, USB cable, fire truck charger. Total price on the bid is $6,047.50.
You had a donation of what?
$4,000.
$4,000.
And you have plenty of money in your, you had some set aside just for this cause already, right?
Yes, we were working towards that anyway, and then the anonymous donor gave us enough to push it over to...
Nice.
Make this happen.
Nice, that's awesome.
That's amazing.
Yep, we have a great town, and a lot of support in the community, which is great.
It is great. So that's what it is, that's what you're looking for?
Yep.
Means one bid, there's no sense to...
Yeah, no, we followed the, we followed policy, so...
That's to prolong it.
Nope.
I mean, typically, when we get bid specs in, you know, open bids, we give them to the department heads, let them review it. Give you two seconds, you want to take a look at that, just to make sure that's what Um, give you two seconds. You wanna take a look at that, just to make sure that's what you're looking for? Look great, okay? In that case, what is your wishes?
I'll make a motion, we accept the bid from HSE, um, Enterprises for the thermal camera for the fire department, uh, for the cost of $6,047.57, uh, 50 cents.
Okay, move, I'll second that. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All for a vote? All in favor? All opposed?
Thank you. Would you like me to reach out to them directly? That let them know that they've accepted it?
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay, I'll take, I'll take care of it.
Okay, awesome. And thanks for the donor.
Thank you, guys, and, and if the anonymous, the anonymous donor is watching, we thank you. This piece of equipment's gonna be put to great use, uh, keeping our community safe, so thank you.
They're great pieces of equipment. I've used them myself, so. Anytime you can have a thermal camera, it's a wonderful thing. Okay, signed special town meeting warrant.
So, um, as Dennis mentioned, the Warren Finance met last night. Uh, secretary contacted me today, and, uh, the chair was in as well to review the recommendations, to make sure we had them on there correctly, um, so you will see that, um, I guess I just need you to take a peek at those recommendations and sign it, so we can get it posted for Monday.
Okay, we've read this already, so.
Yeah.
We know, everybody knows what we're doing.
Um, I, I think, did we actually read it? When you made the recommendations, we probably read the articles.
Yeah, I know, I know you read, you read the articles.
Yeah.
Maybe you did, so.
It'll be advertised.
So, yeah, so we got article two.
Jim and I approved this the, the other week, so we can get it off to the finance.
Yes, right, right.
Which is the additional money for the Emmer Mills Dam project of $18,454. Uh, Board of Selectmen recommend it 3-0, Warren Finance recommends it 4-2. And then the second article is to, is to replenish the 15,000 that we took out of our 15,000, uh, emergency fund that put the, put the furnace in the fire station, so we're just replenishing that money. Uh, Board of Selectmen recommend it 3-0, and the Warren Finance recommends it 3-0, uh, 6-0. So, what are your wishes?
I make a motion to accept the Finance Committee's recommendations.
Okay. Okay, I'll second it, and we will sign this. All in favor? All opposed? Sign this and get this off. And this is for a special town meeting, and it is, what, February 3rd? Yep, right at 6 o'clock right here. That's the only two items on it.
Motion to sign the special town meeting warrant.
Oh. We'll back up a smidge here. I thought.
Well, so that, you know, you made recommendations on the article, on your articles.
Oh, okay, okay.
That's what they did, so really just making a special, uh-
So, do I hear a motion to sign the-
Special town meeting.
Uh, warrant for the special town meeting?
I make a recommendation, we sign the warrant for the special town meeting.
Okay, now, I'll, I'll second it. Any further discussion? All for vote? All in favor? All opposed? Okay, there you go.
I thought we'd already done that.
Yeah, you signed the articles, but-
I did too.
Technical, technical, little warrants.
Uh, next, we have building permit, 215-004.
So map 215-004 was, uh, subject to a fire some time ago, um, so they are looking to have the fees waived, and I'll pass this over to you, so you can see the name. So, um, building permit fees are $440, and the individual, um, has already paid a $79 fee, which was for $50 to have his RV parked there, and $29 was temporary electrical while he worked on it, um, but he's looking to have that waived in, be reimbursed the $79 because it was a fire outside of his control.
Yeah, I think we usually do, that's normally what we do.
Normally we do, yeah, yeah. So it's $79 even?
Uh, 79 is what he's paid in, and then it's 440. He hasn't gotten the permit yet.
Yeah.
We won't reimburse him the 79. For now, the rest of it, it's just waiving it.
Right, so we would vote to re, you know, to reimburse if you so choose, and then to waive the 440, so he can move forward, this permit.
So what are we gonna, we're not, we're not gonna use the name?
Not gonna use the name, we're just gonna use the, uh-
Map and lot, yeah.
The map and lot number, which was right there.
Yeah, right there, yeah.
So do I hear a motion?
I make a motion, we waive the permit fee and reimburse the $79 back to permit number 215-004.
Okay, I will second that. We, so it's been moved and seconded to waive the fees and to reimburse the $79 to building permit number 215-004. Call for vote? All in favor? All opposed? Any further, Pat? We have to have one of the little tubes, two things. Okay, policies.
All right, so last week, uh, we went over a few, um, so the emergency closure policy, we made just one change regarding the voicemail that we tried to get it on, so that's, and we read these aloud last week.
Yeah.
And then the other one was the excise tax exemption. This is for our Purple Heart or 100% paid. The hourly, the wage one we held off on, drug testing, we're still holding off on, so just looking for signatures for those two.
You wanna do these both together, or you wanna do them separate?
Let's do them together.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
I make a motion, we accept, um, we sign the policies for the excise tax exemption policy, the emergency closure policy.
Okay, now I'll second it. Moved and seconded that we sign the excise tax exemption policy, and we sign the emergency closure policy. Any further discussion? Call for vote? All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. Okay, Mary Grant members.
So we have two members of the Mary Grant that were appointed to the committee on September 25th of 2019. Uh, they haven't been sworn in. We have sent letters. I got an email from the chair today confirming that they haven't had any activity, um, so I'm looking for you to rescind the appointments. I did confirm with legal because of the way that, it's just an appointed committee that you have the right to do that.
And you try contacting them.
Yeah, we've sent letters.
Yeah.
I mean, they knew they were appointed. They stepped forward to say they were interested. I didn't come up with the names.
Okay.
So, short of rescinding them, so he can have, they can advertise that they have more people, but, like I said, the chair just told me today to please rescind. They're not-
Okay.
They're not attending or active.
Okay, do we hear a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion, we rescind Bobby Joe Rogers and Laura Denskowsky. Is that how it's spelled, how it's pronounced?
Denskowsky, yeah.
Denskowsky, um, from the Mary Grant Committee.
Okay, I will second it. So it's been moved and seconded that we rescind the two appointments for Bobby Joe Rogers and Laura Denskowsky for the Mary Grant Committee. Uh, any further discussion? All for vote? All in favor? All opposed?
Well, yeah, if you can just write rescind and initial it, so we have it for the file. So the Mary Grant has a couple openings, if anybody's interested.
Just right on the bottom there. Okay, public comment time. Anyone from the public, anything you wanna bring up? Anyone at all? One once, one twice. Okay, announcements. Uh, once again, special town meeting. It's gonna be February 3rd, uh, right here at the town hall, and that's for the two, uh, the two articles that we read earlier, and that's all that's gonna be discussed at the town meeting. That's all you can discuss.
6 o'clock?
6 o'clock, right here. Yep, that's all there is there, and as you saw, we have now some openings on the Mary Grant, so if anybody interested in that, uh, you have anything else?
I don't.
Nope, you have nothing else?
No, no.
Okay, with that, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn, January 22nd.
Okay, I'll second it. Moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor? All opposed? Good night, all.